For joining us today for our first Board of Education pre-work session. Our new board meeting cadence will allow for board members to prepare for upcoming regular meetings through these pre-work sessions. These are more casual in format, primarily for the purpose of information gathering. No formal votes will be taken in these. And we have one presentation this afternoon. Dr. Whitaker, please introduce.
Yes, thank you so much Chair Herndon, and I am calling upon Ms. Amanda Lynch, our Chief of Staff. Give a policy discussion.
Good afternoon, Board Chair Herndon, Vice Chair Solton, esteemed members of the Board, and Superintendent Dr. Jima Whitaker. As the Board of Education, you serve as a strategic policymaking body. I would like to first acknowledge the substantial work that you accomplished last year in adopting and revising policies. Nearly eighty policies have revision dates from the 2022-2023 school year. Today, I will share with you the process we propose to ensure that board policies are reviewed periodically. The superintendent is authorized to establish such administrative processes as stated in Board Policy BD. This presentation is designed to detail the process for how we will identify our policy priorities for this school year. We envision our policy development cycle to take place in three steps. Step one is to audit. During the audit phase, we will simply identify what policies are already in place, as well as what policies are not yet in place. This will allow us to identify any areas in which we may have gaps in policies. Step two is to prioritize. During the prioritize phase, we will look closely at the existing policies and any missing policies. We will prioritize policies that need development, as well as any policies that might need revision. We will also look at existing policies that might need operating guidelines developed. While operating guidelines do not require board approval, they are important to describe the operational processes needed to implement a policy. Operating guidelines will be shared with the Board and the public. The criteria we will use during the prioritization step will be discussed on the next slide. Next is step three. Step three is to calendar and implement. During this phase, we will take the policies that were prioritized, in timeline when they would come to you, at the Board, for first reads, anticipated second reads, and so on. Importantly, notice that feedback cycles will take place during each of the three steps throughout the process. I will discuss feedback in more detail later in this presentation as well. Let's look a little more closely at step two, prioritize. Step two of the process was prioritizing policies. A number of criteria will be considered when determining what policies we need to prioritize for development and/or revision. The first criteria is fiscal implications. Policies that have the potential to significantly impact our budget must be identified. The next criteria is direct student impact. We must prioritize any policies that directly impact our students. For example, this might include establishing an official grading policy. Currently, we have grading practices, however, an overarching policy has not been established. The third criteria is legal implications. When prioritizing policies for development or revision, we must consider any changes to federal, state, and local laws that may require us to create a new policy or update an existing policy. For this criteria, we are considering what policies may be necessary for regulatory compliance. The final criteria that we will use to prioritize policies for development or revision is reputational risk. It is vital that we maintain our positive reputation among all our stakeholders and the larger community. If a lack of policy exposes us to a reputational risk, then the development of a policy to address this reputational risk should be prioritized. Feedback opportunities will be available throughout the policy development and revision cycle. Feedback will be solicited from various stakeholders. First, as board members, you will provide feedback. This will include support with prioritizing policies for development. Board members will also provide feedback around needed policy revisions, including adjustments to the language in existing policies. Board members are invited to share feedback from their constituents that will inform the policy process. Second, central office staff and legal staff will provide feedback throughout the policy process. This may include supporting with policy prioritization, drafting, or revising policies. It may also include creating operating guidelines that accompany policies. Third, school-based staff will provide feedback during the policy process. This includes informing policies and/or operating guidelines. This may look like participating in focus groups to gain feedback from the school perspective on how policies or operating guidelines may impact the day-to-day experiences of students and staff in our schools. Finally, we recognize the importance of creating opportunities for our community members to provide feedback. Community members are invited to share feedback through their board member or through formal community input opportunities.
Where are our students in this process?
Excellent, and student feedback and that school-based staff as well, student feedback is something we would definitely account for too.
So that, I mean, it's just me?
Excellent, yes. So this concludes the update on the process we will use during the 2023-2024 school year to identify, prioritize, and ultimately calendar the policies that we will bring to you, the Board of Education. Our next step will be to begin this process. An update will be provided to you in September. We anticipate we will be able to provide you with the policies that have been identified as the highest priority for development and revision, and a tentative policy review timeline for first semester. Additional questions?
How do we let the community know what policies we're going to be working on? So, just a little bit of background, if we would post something for us to discuss, the community would get it. They'd freak out, like, oh my gosh, you all are gonna let us spank kids or something like that. It was really just pulling a policy that made-
For the record, we are not going-
No, but there is Georgia law that we put in our board packet, a law that was up, and the purpose was to discuss it. Obviously, the discussion was-
No, to remove it.
Right, to remove it. And so, I'm just, I want to be very, I love all of this, but the first question that comes to me is, can you talk about how we're gonna roll that out? How we're gonna let the community know, how we're gonna let the caterers, these are the things we're going-
Yeah, so as we work through that prioritization process and gain that feedback, we'll be able to present that calendar. And so, in the agendas of the Board of Education, working together, we'll be able to identify, and of course, that would be public on when we're expecting to engage in policy, whether it is in a pre-work session, or whether it is for first read, or second read, or adoption.
Right, and will we define first read when we post that? Let me just re- say, let's define first read when we put it out there.
Yeah, we will be sure to do so.
Yeah, okay. My second question is, can you define significant fiscal impact?
So, fair, that is a relative term, correct? And so, I think understanding as we're going through the priority, there are some that might have some more fiscal impacts than others, and so, that's kind of like a normative comparison, that you can understand the ones that would meet that criteria of having an impact on our budget.
Yeah, I would just love to hear, like-
Yeah, so a prime example, Chair Herndon, would be a travel policy. So, what is the, what is our belief around travel? What would be that, whether it's in-state, out-of-state, national, international, timelines, guidelines around that? Is an example of that, that's where there is a potential fiscal impact, as we're discussing policies that would also have any implications for budget. Authorization, or policy, or even operating guideline around purchasing, procurement, things of that nature. So wherever there could be clarity brought via policy or operating guideline is what the administration seeks to do.
Yeah. That's good, and then I'm not complaining, I love that it's a variable in there. It's just often like, when you, we tell people, yeah, like, what is it, oh, this is a $10,000 decision, so we're definitely gonna put it first, or is it literally a scale? That's a good, that's a great example. It's literally fiscal policies, and then policies that have the potential to be a big impact on the budget. Okay.
Just a couple of quick questions. And quickly, maybe as an example, for the community, when we talk about the policy for travel, for example, among the other things that you mentioned that would be in the policy, is it appropriate, the policy has a level of detail around approvals, or is that something that gets defined at the level of the operating procedure?
That is defined at the operating procedure.
Great, thank you. I did want to really quickly ask, maybe the second slide, where it was talking about the process, when we talk about identifying the policies that we have from the audit, and identifying the policies that we don't have, talk a little bit about how you identify what we don't have. I mean, are we benchmarking against somebody, like, how's that process work?
Absolutely, I think there's a number of different ways that that can take place, but there is, you know, the policies that can exist, right? And we don't have them all in place. And so, it could be a number of different things, looking at the ones that could exist and don't, and it could be benchmarking it against other districts, as well, that, you know, which policies do all of the metro area districts have in place that we don't have in place? Would be a telling piece that might make us realize this is missing, and something that we don't have, so we should prioritize and look at.
Um, I think maybe more of a communications question, but will we continue to use Symbly for all of this work, and do all of the school websites have like interactive links to Symbly, so that it's easy to find, like, as these, as the policies get longer, so that people can find them?
Yeah, so all schools utilize Symbly since their school leadership team, and so, the governance inside the school, if you will, mirrors that at the district level, and so, we can obviously make sure that it is readily available and visible, so that it's not hidden. Yes, because even on our website, we have to go through a couple clips to get there.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, well, and welcome. We should have started that, and thank you, that was-
Good to be here, thank you.
Well done. Okay.
Want to move? So, how about a call?
Yeah, well, as I say, we move right into our work session, right? Do we close that one, start that one?
Yes.
Okay.
So, he's gonna probably do it.
Okay.
You're good?
We're good, all right. So, there we go, the, thank you for joining us for our monthly work session. We recognize this is our first time combining a work session and a board meeting, and our new board meeting cadence, an example of trying to be more effective, efficient organization as we implement all indicator, our strategic plan. We have one presentation as part of our work session today. Dr. Whitaker, will you introduce the presentation?
Yes, thank you so much, Board Chair Herndon, and today, our presentation will be on our first day of school, so our back-to-school update. Would our staff members please join? First, we will have Ms. Karen Newton-Scott, who is our Chief Performance Officer. She will be accompanied by Ms. Adina Walker, our Chief Human Resources Officer, and then finally, Ms. Jennifer Burton, who is our Assistant Superintendent of Teaching and Learning.
Welcome back to school. Good afternoon, Board Chair Herndon, Vice Chair Solton, esteemed members of the Board, and Superintendent Dr. Jima Whitaker. I'm Karen Newton-Scott, Chief of School Performance, and I'm pleased to kick off a glimpse of how we are returning for the 2023-24 school year. Having served as a former principal, I've always held a deep affection for both the first and the last day of school. Each offers a blend of excitement and anticipation in different ways and for different reasons. As I reflect on the first day of this school year, those familiar emotions resurface, not only within me, but across the expressions of students, staff, and families captured in the photographs that we will now see. We began our first day of school with Superintendent Dr. Jima Whitaker, Chief Operation Officer Sergio Perez, and Chief of Communications McCall Hart, arriving at the Kentucky Street location, bright and early as our Transportation Department sprang into action, starting up our fleet of buses to receive students from our neighborhoods within CSD. Our team stood ready and well-prepared with a fleet of fourteen buses, ready to run sixty-four routes throughout the city. In addition to our dedicated crew that initiated the day by supporting our exceptional Transportation Division, every department head and director at the Wilson Center united to support our school, ensuring a successful launch of the school year. From the Early Childhood Learning Center to Decatur High School, the entirety of the Superintendent's Cabinet was present and engaged in schools from morning drop-off to afternoon dismissal. Our biggest accomplishment was in welcoming a total of five thousand six hundred and seventy-three students into our schools, with one thousand two hundred and thirty-four enrolled in the lower elementary, one thousand two hundred and forty-nine at upper elementary, and three thousand one hundred and ninety at the secondary level. We are also serving about forty-seven students through our Decatur Virtual Academy. The first three days of school, first three days of school, we achieved an average attendance rate of ninety-seven percent. The first day's success wouldn't have been possible without the expertise and unwavering effort of our dedicated building-level staff. As we move forward in this presentation, it is a privilege to introduce Adina Walker, our Chief Human Resource Officer, who will share information about the wonderful addition- Good afternoon, Chair Herndon, Vice Chair Solton, other members of the Board, and Dr. Jima Whitaker. Today, I present to you back-to-school from a human capital perspective. HR Strategic Accelerator is cultivating and retaining quality professionals, and the initiative that drives our work is the CSD experience, hire to retire. This means from the time we encounter our staff, during the recruitment process, to onboarding, to developing and leveraging our staff, which directly correlates to retention, and finally, to retirement, we have mastered the CSD experience. So here are the numbers, the new hires by the numbers. For the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, we have welcomed close to a hundred and thirty certified and classified new hires to our district. Those new hires, eighty-two point five identify as female, and seventeen point five percent identify as male. So far, seventy-two point three are certified staff, and twenty-seven point seven are classified. We also wanted to give you a breakdown of the classification levels of our classroom teachers who are ready to go on the first day of school. Combined holding a doctorate or a specialist degree, we have thirteen teachers, and the majority are holding a master's degree. When we look at the racial demographic of our new hires, we have a diverse population entering our district. We were tasked with making strides toward increasing the representation of individuals from historically marginalized groups in the certified employee group. So if we look at the percentage of the Black new hires of this year, we have increased from forty-three point five from last year to forty-five point one, and as well as our Hispanic new hires, from one point seven to two point three. Now, as you can see, we are improving. We may not be exactly where we would like to be, but we are making a noted effort toward this goal. We are also happy to say that we have filled all our new positions this year, including the intellectual disability position at the high school, that was seeming difficult to fill, so we have filled that. So I would say this is a tremendous accomplishment as districts, even in the metro area, experienced a decrease in teacher applicants. So as we end our back-to-school report, we have three new principals this year, which were all internal promotions, so I believe they are actually here today. We have Ms. Dewayne Rule, who is the Principal of Decatur High School. Have Ms. Lynn Hansen, the Principal of Ben Avenue of the elementary. Have Ms. Tetravion Lockwood, Principal of Claremont Elementary. We are so proud of them, and we wish them the best as they start the new year. So now, I will turn it over to Ms. Jennifer Burton, who is the Assistant Superintendent of Teaching and Learning.
Thank you, Adina. Good afternoon, Board Chair Herndon, Vice Chair Solton, esteemed Board members, and Superintendent Dr. Jima Whitaker. I'm excited to talk to you today about one of the biggest changes in teaching and learning, math. We have new Georgia Math K-5 standards and new resources. In our standards, we will see an increased focus on math comprehension and reasoning. Our teachers will give students a variety of tools needed to solve problems, and students will have choice in which tool works best for them. And we'll see math taught in the context of the real world. So for example, our seventh graders' first unit is making relevant connections within the number system. They'll look at bank statements and weather reports to analyze integers in real life. We're using the State of Georgia Math Pacing and Learning Plan. Our curricular resources were written and piloted by Georgia teachers and aligned to the new standard. In K-5, we will also use Building Fact Fluency as a resource. These are not timed tests, but tools for teachers to use in the number routines at the beginning of every lesson. The new standards state fluency does not lend itself to timed tests or speed, but students should be given opportunities to choose flexibly among methods and strategies to solve mathematical problems accurately and efficiently, thus building fact fluency. Our teachers are ready. Teacher training started a year ago through monthly CSD University sessions. These sessions prepared our teachers for the changes in the new standards and new implementation. All teachers were invited to the Georgia DOE Math Training in January, and CSD hosted Metro Risa Math Training to prepare our teachers for Unit One and Unit Two this summer. During pre-planning, not only did our teachers receive a refresher on Unit One and Unit Two plans to ensure day-one readiness, but they also analyzed the plan by asking how we might enhance the plan to be culturally and linguistically relevant. I've already heard from teachers much excitement about the student-centered tasks that align with our CSD portrait of a scholar. As we implement these new standards and resources, we will support our students and staff with math cultural leads in every building. Each school has at least one leader or one coach, and one teacher on the math cultural lead team. The leads are charged with providing ongoing professional development, coaching, and creating a positive math mindset for all students and staff. According to John Hattie's research, a positive mindset or belief in one's ability is strongly- Our leads are tasked with growing that positive math mindset level, so all CSD students and teachers believe they are a math person. This concludes our back-to-school update. Have any questions for any of us?
I wanted to highlight that we have filled all of our teacher positions. I just wanted to bring that up again, and I think that's a good part of the lot. I know that around our metro Atlanta in Georgia, and then, of course, nationally, it's a huge problem, and so, it's very heartwarming to know that we aren't experiencing that specific problem. And I had a question on that graph that you broke down. Do you happen to have those numbers in its totality? So, for example, you said eighty-five percent identify as female, a part of the hundred and thirty that were hired?
Yes, this is all new hire data.
Okay, and so, do you happen to have that data, in its totality, the breakdown of those who identify as female and identify as male, and then the racial breakdown of our, of our entire staff?
I do definitely get that to you.
Okay.
I did not get that yet, but I wanted to give you those numbers from new hires, but yes, the correlation and the test.
Awesome, and then my last question on the male teachers, is that, is that an uptick from the past years?
Last year, because I remember seeing that it was about fifty percent. So it's a slight increase, but an increase at the end of the day?
At the end of the day, right, okay, great, thank you.
So, I had two quick questions on the, on the new math standards, just what was the window of time that we had to prepare for that, right? So when, when they're gonna change, when did we first see them, and then be able to do the training?
So, in 2019, the DOE came out and said, we are going to be implementing a new math standard. Then, you know, right, then things slowed down, but effective last year, we were training all year long, so through monthly professional development, and then summer, and then again during pre-planning, and then we have ongoing professional development led at the school level on our early release dates.
Right, but I'm, as a math guy, I'm thrilled to hear us getting away from time testing and things of that nature, and that's just not how it works in the real world, so that's really good news. And Dr. Whitaker, I know I had mentioned this to you previously as well, but as schools start back up, and especially for parents that are, kids are maybe coming into the school for the first time, the historic flood of communications that comes from CSD at this time can be a little bit overwhelming, so I was hoping we could maybe talk just a little bit about what the community can expect on that front, and how we're gonna try to get our arms around that.
Yes, thank you, thank you so much, Board Member. It's very important that the flood of communication that comes from CSD, whether it's from my office, such as the back-to-school message, or our listening sessions, or from what comes from the schools, i.e. from your principals, and then from the teachers, and then all the various district offices, all of that communication really is going to be a focus of this administration. I am one that believes the, I believe that communication should be professional, and it should really have the audience in mind. And so, we will engage in a few different ways to learn more about the best ways to communicate which ideas to our families, as well as to our students. So we have two different audiences that we are communicating to, and how to target that. So I will be working with principals, and we have hired a Chief Communications Officer, and so, we're just establishing that department. I will be talking with them, as well as the Chief Communications Officer will be starting that training tomorrow with our, with our leaders, as well as with our district staff, because communication happens in multiple different venues. And so, in order to prioritize, obviously, as a parent, which I am, what the teacher sends home is probably the first thing that I read, and it goes up like that, as far as priority is concerned. And I want our families to know that there will be a consistent message, and it will be a clear message. It is one that we will begin to train on, how to communicate, what to communicate, when to communicate, and via which venue. So those are some of the things that our leaders should look forward to receiving, but then also things that our families will learn to receive in a more standardized format.
That's great, and just so the families that are listening, it is, that's not gonna happen- That's great. And just so the families that are listening, it is, that's not going to happen overnight, right? This is going to be a process, but I appreciate the thoughtfulness that we're trying to take on that.
Thank you.
I don't have a question, you have a comment, and that is, I'm so excited that Principals Lockwood, Hansen, and Sproul are both like, as a teacher, that'd be very exciting to lead with hire and retire and to include. And by the way, our new principals have worked here and been here and part of it. That's great. And want to say, yeah, they haven't chose to run away yet.
We promoted.
Looking at you, Ms. Hansen, don't be running away from us, you know, just kidding, I don't know. But thank you all, and thanks for giving teachers the opportunity. That's got to be really encouraging as we work on morale in the HR department. I like, Decatur gives me the opportunity to grow and move up. It's awesome.
So thank you so much for that presentation today. And we're going to take a pause to allow our board to meet. Obviously, you know the new principals, but we can actually do an official meet and an official picture with each one of the principals together, and then before proceeding into our official board meeting.
Great.
Thank you.
Call this meeting to order at 5:30 PM. If you have a cell phone or anything like that, turn it off at this time. We will begin with a moment of silence, followed by the pledge of allegiance. At this time, I ask that everyone join me in a moment of silent reflection. Yeah, anyone who wants to log in online, being able to log in for the start of the
Well, they were able to log in for the meeting, right? We could log in to the question.
Yeah. I'll call this meeting to order at 5:30 PM. If you have a cellphone or anything like that, turn it off at this time. We will begin with a moment of silence, followed by the pledge of allegiance. At this time, I ask that everyone join me in a moment of silent reflection. Thank you. Now I ask all that are able to please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, with liberty and justice for all.
Our mission is to inspire and enable student growth through meaningful and engaging learning experiences, supported by highly qualified and caring educators in a safe and inviting environment. Given that, we will move on to the second item on the agenda, which is the approval of the board meeting agenda for August of 2023. Board members, are there any revisions to the agenda this evening? Do I have a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
To approve tonight's agenda.
Uh, Board Member Utz makes a motion. May I have any seconds at this time? Board Member Tasha White, second's motion. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously. Uh, our next agenda item is the approval of minutes from previous board meetings. Minutes from the regular meeting in June and July have been submitted. Additionally, minutes from the June 15th special board meeting and the third public hearing on the Taxpayer Bill of Right have been submitted. Do I have a motion to approve June's regular board minutes?
To approve June's regular board minutes?
Uh, do I have a second?
A second.
Uh, Board Member White makes the motion. Board Member Salton, second's motion. Any discussion? Motion carries unanimously. Do I have a motion to approve July's regular board minutes?
To approve July's regular.
Do I have a second? I think it's like a race. Board Member Utz makes the motion. Board Member White, second's motion. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. We've got two more of these. Uh, do I have a motion to approve the special board meeting June 15th minutes?
To approve the June 15th special board meeting?
And do I have a second? Oh, yes. Uh, Board Member White makes the motion. Board Member Utz, second's the motion. Any discussion?
What was that meeting?
Boy, the June 15th special board meeting. What was that meeting? The minutes are in your
Was that not another, we had several tax hearings?
Yes, that was the tax hearing to finalize it. Excellent. Any further discussion of that? All those in favor?
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously. Uh, last one. Do I have a motion to approve the third public hearing Taxpayer Bill of Rights minutes?
To approve the third taxpayer bill of rights.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. Board Member White makes the motion. Board Member Utz, second's motion. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Woo, we are now going to move forward with our other agenda items. We will start with our first superintendent's report. Dr. Whitaker, do you have anything to share with us this evening?
Yes, I do. Thank you so much, Board Chair Herndon, and welcome to the 2023-24 school year. We have had a very smooth opening, and thank you to our students for being all in. So they have been all in as our teachers have prepared for them. And thank you for our staff for being all in as well. They have welcomed each and every one of our students back, and it has been a pleasure to see. One of the things that I am all in on is safety. So the safety and the learning of our students in the most optimal environment is critical. I will say that we will continuously engage all of our stakeholders around safety matters. And to enhance the support of both students and staff, the board graciously allowed the expansion of the safety and security team. So Jerome Tilery, as well as Christopher Jamison, are our new safety and security officers. While they will primarily serve Beacon Hill Middle School and Decatur High School, they will also dedicate significant time to visiting all of our campuses and locations here at CSD. This proactive approach ensures that we interweave equity into every facet of our school district, even through our safe learning environment. Board, overall, the city schools of Decatur remained among the top districts in the state as well as our Metro Atlanta region in all content areas for the Georgia milestones. I want to personally congratulate Beacon Hill Middle School and their staff as their highest gains were in sixth and also sixth grade math and seventh grade English for all of their middle school students. Our students and staff and leaders and our entire CSD community should really be proud of what our students have accomplished. But we also acknowledge that the data highlights areas where our instructional framework must be strengthened to ensure that we have equitable outcomes for all students. To this end, the instructional cabinet, which includes the Assistant Superintendent of Teaching and Learning, as well as our Associate Superintendent of Student Services, our Chief Performance Officer, Chief Staff, as well as the principals and myself, are going to conduct a root cause analysis next week on our milestone data. That will be conducted at the subgroup level. What that simply means is we will look at the student performance by grade, obviously, but by race, by gender, by socioeconomic status, by their learning environment, and by that, whether they're an English as a second language student or whether they are a student from an economically disadvantaged area or even special education. I look forward to bringing those findings of that root cause analysis to our board retreat, our first board retreat, which will take place on August the 22nd. So that information will really help guide the school-level action plan. Also, I know I referenced it a little earlier today, but we have a lot of work to do around communication. The cultural shift throughout the district will be a huge undertaking, but please know that I've heard all of you, as well as I have heard the community, and I will make that my focus. The translation of our upcoming listening sessions, which will begin next week, tomorrow, but those translations of all of those listening sessions into all of the different languages is an example of how I am committed, as well as this administration, to all, truly meaning all, and we are going to communicate with all of our families. So please, please, look on our website. It's on each and every website. But please engage community. Come to the listening sessions. Our first one is tomorrow. It will be at Decatur High School at 5:30. And I look forward to everyone, as I am in the gathering phase. Many of you have heard me talk about the city schools of Decatur is a G. And that G stands for gathering. Where I will be listening, I will be learning in the first phase of this administration so that we can take all of those to envision our path forward in order to maximize the M, our results and outcomes for our students. Here in CSD, we will have every student seem safe and successful. Chair Herndon, that completes my report.
Excellent. That's Dr. Whitaker. Moving on to the chair's report. Question, sorry.
Yeah, just was going to ask about the actual milestone data on the 22nd at the retreat. Is that when we're planning on sharing it with the whole broader community? Will be able to see the subgroup information?
Yeah.
And have everyone understand what we, okay, great. I just want to make sure that if not a board retreat where the information is not going out, it is absolutely going out publicly, everything will be available. Great. Thank you.
And that is recorded as well on the 22nd?
We can, let me work on that, because it may or may not be in a location that would have a camera.
Okay. I don't think they're recorded. I think the retreats are, they can, they're open to the public.
Yes.
And I think we can have a Zoom link open, a Zoom option like we have here, but it's not necessarily, I don't think that the retreats have to be recorded.
Thank you, Dr. Whitaker. Apologize for looking at. Want to greet CSD students, staff, and families. On behalf of the board, I'd like to officially welcome everybody back for the 2023-2024 school year. Uh, first, I want to congratulate Dr. Whitaker. Uh, our schools and all CSD staff as well on just an amazing first day. Our students were turned to a safe, engaging learning environment. They were filled with smiles, cheers, excitement, high-quality instruction, just ready to provide another great year of learning. As we celebrate the start of the new year, I have a few highlights or brag notes kind of about each school. Um, at the elementary level, I want to congratulate Glenwood, Oakhurst, Tally, and Westchester for receiving the American School Counselor Association Model Program Recognition. Uh, it's just called RAMP. Uh, the RAMP designation demonstrates to administrators, us as a school board, families in the community, that our schools are committed to supporting the mission of the school and district. Today, there are thirteen hundred schools in the country that have earned that RAMP designation. As a very personal level, I was also asked to sit in on the Glenwood last year as a parent, and it was an opportunity to see the way the counselors take the policies at the school board level and apply it with the teachers in the classroom. Look for things like equity and improvement. Uh, and I want to give a shout out to Mr. Blaze, who was my daughter's counselor at the time. It just blown away the level of detail that this policy went into, and it just represents what our community is committed. Second, College Heights ECLC is rolling out a parent engagement menu to offer a variety of opportunities for parents to engage without, through the school throughout the year. I'm excited to see how that works. Uh, Claremont, they took a proactive year by building stronger connections, both with the families and the local community. The principal and the staff spent their first pre-planning trip at the Decatur Housing Authority to understand the resources and support available within the Decatur community. The visit included a tour of the facility, learning the history of the community, and meeting with those families. Great job, Claremont. At Woonona Park, this is the school's first year joining some of the other lower elementary schools, and they will be offering STEMI Fridays with a focus on STEAM education. Uh, the Fave Falcons flew in ready to rise up and learn. Fave included a STEM class as part of their offering. Fave included a STEM class as part of their offerings for specials that parents can see on their student's agenda this year. Third, in the middle school, Beacon Hill, also a recipient of the RAMP award and what is offered for our middle school students. And finally, at Decatur High School, Kristin Embry was selected in a cohort of 25 teachers across the country for the U.S. Institute of Pieces 2023 Peace Teachers Program. The UCIP program is a virtual professional development opportunity for teachers in the U.S. For the 2023 program, participants receive education, resources, and support to help them teach international conflict and the possibilities of peace. Another example of our teachers going above and beyond. I'm truly grateful for the employees in this district, every teacher, staff member, school, district leader, for supporting the academic and social emotional development of all of our students. We all share a heartfelt gratitude and appreciation for the tremendous work they do every day to support our students in and out of the classroom. We also appreciate the partnership and support of our families and communities. The new mission statement begins with "in partnership with our community." We truly believe that in order to inspire and enable student growth through those experiences, partnerships are critical. Finally, just congratulations again. Great first day and week. Look forward to a wonderful year. And then I wanted to remind everyone, we did a good job of emailing out, letting people know we have a revised board meetings cadence. The change aligns with the board's strategic goal of ensuring effectiveness and efficiency on an organizational level. So today's meetings were an executive session from 3:00 to 4:30, the pre-work session from 4:30 to 5:00, work session from 5:00 to 5:30, and then the board meeting from 5:30 to 6:30. We will commit to public comment at 6:30 PM consistently on the agenda. And so except for the executive session, we'll continue to livestream them, they'll be open to the public. The content and the times will vary. We'll stick to that 6:30 and kind of work backwards based on what we have to do today so that staff can participate in creating a meaningful agenda. We just have so much to celebrate in CSD as we work to get better. As Dr. Whitaker expressed, change takes time. Asking community support and grace as we work to make CSD from good to great. Any fellow board members have any thoughts or anything else they would like to add to the comments from the board? All right. So I guess that moves us on to action items. We did not have any action on executive session items. We'll move to the consent, correct, consent agenda items, which include the personnel report, school nutrition report, monthly financial reports. We have a motion to approve consent items 1 through 3.
Move to approve consent items 1 to 3.
We have a second.
Second.
Thank you. Board member, oops, made a motion. Board member White seconded. Any discussion?
Actually, I did want to make one mention about the financial reports. Dr. Whitaker, I spoke to you about this. I do believe that it may be worthwhile to review format and structure. It's an awful lot of information to absorb in a tabulated format. And so I look forward to us working towards getting that to something that a human can process.
Yes, we have discussed that, board members, and we will look at that a little differently. So the financials that were submitted were obviously from last fiscal year. I'm working with our, with staff to determine what level of transparency is needed, as well as what would be best suited for this governance team. And so I will have a different iteration for you for next, next.
Great. Thank you.
So the first version of your financial reports we'll see next month?
Yes.
Oh, just exciting.
Oh, did you say ooh? The number.
Excited. I like numbers. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next, we will review our discussion items. We have one item this afternoon. Dr. Whitaker, will you please introduce?
Yes, Board Chair Herndon, I call on Mr. Sergio Perez, Chief Operations Officer, to share the item about the Decatur Legacy Park Track and Field.
Good afternoon, Board Chair Herndon. I chair Dr. Sultan, other members of the board, and Superintendent Dr. Jim Whitaker. On June 20, 2023, the City Board of Commissions approved a motion to proceed with the design plan for the Legacy Park Track and Field facility with the condition to minimize the impact on the front lawn. The final design field will include a synthetic track lane and 400 meters of track with a turf field to accommodate the needs for soccer, lacrosse, and football. We anticipate the facility will be used primarily for training. The proposed plan includes the removal of the existing pool and significant improvements to the existing old gym to provide storage, ADA access, and restrooms. Additionally, the renovated space includes a chair space for maintenance and equipment. This is a fieldhouse elevation conceptual design. And the proposal fieldhouse will provide potential space indoors during inclement weather, office space, first ID room, electrical closets, basic concession stands, six restrooms with access keys for service and maintenance, additional storage for equipment, and hydration stations. The recommendation for the board action item is to seek approval for real land planning and the design team to begin the construction documents, permitting, and pre-qualification for contractors prior to producing competitive bids for construction. We aim to begin the construction by early 2024 with a target completion date in the late fall 2024. Funding will be provided jointly by 50% of the cost by City of Decatur and 50% of the cost by City Schools of Decatur. City Schools of Decatur funding will be from S+6. The next steps, our next steps involve drafting the memorandum of understanding to establish guidelines and processes for operation and maintenance, shared usage, the revenue distribution for third-party rentals. This process is currently underway, and we expect it to have it finalized by January 2024. The comprehensive document will cover various aspects, including budget planning, transportation, personal development, equipment, infrastructure, and overall maintenance. It is crucial to emphasize that this allocation of funds will have an effect on the general fund budget. It will be a joint responsibility of City of Decatur and City Schools of Decatur, with both parties contributing equally at 50%. Furthermore, we will also be concentrating on identified opportunities to reduce rental costs and achieve savings. This concludes the Legacy Park Track and Field presentation. Do you have any questions?
At what point do we think that we'll have our beginning budget estimates and budgetary impact for maintenance versus presumably some amount of the maintenance can be capitalized, some amount of it is obviously operationalized? It would be interesting to know roughly when can we start seeing that kind of an impact?
So we are currently working on it. The first approach will be creating the memorandum of understanding and obviously seek agreement from the City of Decatur. And we are looking into a more specific scope of work with the details of frequencies, personnel, equipment. It's an older kind of thing that involves obviously a cost. That's why I want to make sure that it is part of the general funding and will create some type of impact in the future, obviously.
So realistically, because the MOU probably isn't, sorry, the memorandum of understanding isn't likely to be fully complete until the beginning of the year, the budget conversation is going to dovetail directly into our budget conversation? We probably won't have a ton of advance notice. It'll just be a part of the, okay, sorry, that's okay.
Have you all gotten into any discussion about the bathrooms? I know we had a lot of discussion around this when Tally was being built and how we would do them and being sensitive to either gender neutral or bathrooms that are gender neutral. So have you all gotten to the nitty-gritty of the bathrooms yet, or is that way down the line?
Yes, we already have a set of drawings and, you know, established some of the restrooms. The details on how this is going to look is probably part of the next conversation.
Right, okay.
But we have access, one of the things important here was the grading going to be elevated at the point that we have ADA access on both sides. So the old gym will be completely accessible. And obviously, the fieldhouse is a level, completely on level.
And for clarification, the maintenance is what's going to actually go into our budget for next year, but the construction is coming out of S+ funds, right?
I mean, to Tasha's question, I think I'm comfortable saying that we ought to be having gender neutral bathroom and not gendered and be as open and available to everyone. Like that would be, I mean, I don't necessarily want to speak for the board, obviously allow the board weigh in on that, but I think that it would probably align with our values if that be the case.
They individual restrooms, I don't think.
They're going to be the individual ones?
Yeah.
Yeah, do you mind going back a few slides to where it has the toilets kind of outline right there? So I didn't ask that question first though because it looks like there will, this is part of the fieldhouse. It's six individual toilets, correct?
Like baby changing tables, so as a recent father of small children, I appreciate that.
May I read the motion statement?
Please.
I move that the City Schools of Decatur Board of Education approved the superintendent's recommendation for the final design of the Decatur Legacy Park Track and Field.
A move that we approve the superintendent's recommendation for the final design of the Decatur Legacy Park Track and Field.
Okay.
All right, I move the motion. Tasha, Board Member White seconded it. Any discussion? Here no further discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously. Yeah, very exciting. I want to thank you, Mr. Perez, for all of your work on Legacy Park and representing us and presentations, the third time, and really appreciate your work on it.
And for all the work that's about to begin.
Oh, no, that part's fine. No, good luck. In fact, Mr. Perez, the Tally Street Field, just to take a moment of personal, Tally Street Field looks beautiful. I had multiple parents comment on me, and I want to thank Mr. Perez, was walking around in the mud earlier in the summer, making sure that it looked good. So appreciate all you do for our community and children. Okay. Sure. Reconvene for public comment. The following information is included in the board policy manual. Members of the public acknowledge this information when they sign up to speak. This should serve as a reminder for all speakers and members of the audience, the opportunity to address the board during public comment is limited to district parents, students, residents, employees, businesses, and organizations. Persons wishing to address the board during public comment must sign in before the period begins and in doing so are asked to state their connection to CSD and/or the City of Decatur. To allow time for other business, public comment will ordinarily be limited to one hour. At board's discretion, the period may be extended for a specified amount of time for a specific number of additional speakers. The time limit for all speakers is three minutes. Persons speaking during public comment will not be permitted to yield the floor or transfer unused time to other speakers. Comments should be addressed to the board of the body, not to any individual members. At the chair's discretion, persons violating this policy may be asked to step down. Speakers should be courteous and professional. Speakers are not to list complaints about specific personnel or individuals connected with the district in a public session. The board strictly prohibits abusive language, threats, comments, jeers, applause, or shouts from the floor. Disruptive persons will be asked to leave the meeting room. The chair may terminate public comments that are profane, vulgar, defamatory, or disruptive. Speakers may not address confidential student or personnel matters, but may submit such concerns to the superintendent in writing. Members of the board will not address the persons presenting public comment or speak to the substance of any comment made during public comment. Instead, a member of the administrative team will follow up with person speaking at the board meeting. Dr. Whitaker will introduce our first speaker.
Yes, thank you, Board Chair Herndon, Ms. Kristin Denny.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for giving us this opportunity to speak. Congratulations on pronouncing my last name correctly the first time out of the gate. My husband likes to say that it spelled like genius with a D, but that's not how you pronounce it. So I'll always remember. So my name is Kristin Denny. I am a parent of an 11th grader at the high school and an 8th grader at the middle school. I've lived in Decatur about 19 years, almost 20, so a long time. My kids have been in CSD since college high, so we are big CSD fans. Couple of things I wanted to say. First of all, I wanted to say thank you. Number one, dress code. Thank you for the new dress code. The stress level in my house with a middle school daughter has gone down more than I can possibly describe to you. I appreciate the fact that it is simple and it is not nerf targeted in any way. I just really big thanks there. Also, wanted to say that I know you are, the superintendent spoke about changes to communication processes. I can already see improvement. I mean, obviously, we all know when you start, one advantage of starting with kind of in a not great place is you have a lot of room for improvement, and some of that is already happening. I've already noticed that the high school and middle school newsletters are much more well-organized than they have been in the past. Be here to find information. I will say one thing that in my, for me personally, they are still a little long and kind of multifaceted in a way that makes it kind of hard to know what's important right now. So just a few things I will throw out there. I'm not, just keep in mind, one thing that would really help in when thinking about comments is including that some way to identify that if communication is coming from a teacher, the teacher, the school, and the grade, because some folks have more than one kid in the same school or kids in different schools. I spent about five minutes the other day reading an email from my son's 11th grade Spanish teacher, thinking it was my daughter's 7th grade Spanish teacher. He had to correct me because I don't know the names yet. And so just that sort of thing, understanding that maybe trying to think about what the parents are getting, trying to be getting out of the communication in addition to what you're trying to communicate, because that seems to be sometimes where the buses are missing. And then really quick about transparency. One thing I just want to throw out there as you're thinking about that as a topic is the number of meetings that we have around CSD at all the different levels of schools and the district. For example, today's meeting runs right up into the DHF SLT meeting, which is almost immediately after this. So it makes it very hard to sit on the same day, it makes it hard to prioritize, and that's a really long stretch of time for parents. So if there's a way to think about strategically how we can maybe encourage all these various groups that have meetings that are very important and they should be public, but like make it so that people can actually go to all of them if they so choose. Now, I understand I'm weird. I'm the one who goes to all the meetings. Most people don't do that, but they might if they could. And then the last thing I'll say is as we're thinking about communicating and soliciting information, I do appreciate very much the reorganization of the agenda for this meeting. I think it makes a lot of sense. I will just throw out a little placeholder about where we have the public comment session section because it's after the business of the board. And so I think that, I don't necessarily think that's a problem. However, it does sort of beg the question of how are people who are looking at the agenda in advance and have a concern or something that they would like to discuss or say to the board, other than emailing you, like is there a way to make that, to solicit that information? Because the comments that they could now make are going to be after the board takes action. And so that's just something, just something to think. I don't think that there's a best way to do it. It's a tension that all public boards have. I know it's working, and so there's never a great place to put it, and there's never a worse place to put it for a variety of reasons, but it's. That is all I have. I'm really excited. That is all I have, I'm really excited about this new school year, my kids are really excited, oh, they did ask me to convey messages to my kids. My 8th grader wanted everybody to know that, yes, middle school is so cringe, and my 11th grader wanted to, his, he's a little bit of an old school, and his message is that he's a 11th grader, he'll be in college in a year and a half, he really has hoped that he would be treated from a, from a disciplinarian kind of a little way, like, maybe a little bit more like they have a little bit of responsibility. So he, he feels, he feels as though they are managed, managing to the lowest common denominator, and he didn't expect that in grade, so.
Thank you, thank you, Kristin.
All right, our second speaker is Ms. Meredith Yancy.
I'm Meredith Yancy, I have a daughter at Beacon Hill and a son at Fave, and I wanted to just say thank you for changing the direction.
All right, I guess Meredith ceded her time to Kristin in reverse, so that works. I appreciate your comments. All right, we'd like to thank all the speakers, thanks for taking the time to be here with us tonight, as board members, your feedback is important, it's important for us to hear your concerns, your community, feedback on all of this, and we do take them into consideration. Future dates, last I haven't discussed, the August board retreat is scheduled for Tuesday, August 22nd, 2023, it will be in Decatur, we're still working on location. The September board meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, September 12th, that will be here at the, at the Wilson Center, we'll have a very similar schedule to this evening with public comment at 6:30, and we'll do that, and we'll be following that new board member cadence. All right, there being no further business, meeting is adjourned at 6:38 PM.